Good evening, everybody. We'd like to call to order our Tuesday, April 27th, workshop regular meeting for the Somerville Board of Education. So at this time, would everybody please stand for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Boyce, can you do a roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Here.
Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Pontillo.
Here.
Dr. Saden.
Here.
Mr. Jess.
Present.
Mr. Sergeil is absent. And Mrs. Van Horn.
Here.
Mr. Kimmich.
Here.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Okay, public notice, adequate notice of this meeting in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled The Open Public Meetings Act has been provided by action of the Board of Education at its regular meeting on December 8, 2020. Notices to the Courier News and Star Ledger circulated in the school district and a posted notice to this effect on the Board of Education website and Building Bulletin Board, Administrative Headquarters, 51 West Cliff Street, Somerville, New Jersey. So at this time, I first want to welcome everybody to the meeting. It's good that, as much as we could see, there's a number of people here. So it's good that we're actually having people attend in person. We're excited that that's a bit of a return to normalcy again. So we have our public comment, our first public comment. So at this time, comment is invited on any matter related to agenda items. So if there are any public comments about agenda items at this time, if you could just come up and to the mic and please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is John Doherty, and I live at 3 Oxford Court in Branchburg, New Jersey. And I do have a comment this evening about the school district's budget. May I proceed?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. Also, I'd like to mention that my son Andrew Doherty is currently a sophomore at Somerville High School. Earlier today, we received the disappointing news from the Somerville School Superintendent, Dr. Tean, that for a second year in a row, the budget that the board is about to review does not include any funding for Somerville High School student athletes that play ice hockey in the Bernard Somerville Middlesex tryout program. As you may know, Somerville's student athletes were key contributors to the team's great success this past year, and I'm hopeful that our students will continue to contribute in the future. With that in mind, I'm asking that the board and the school's administration continue to allow for and support Somerville's membership in the BSM tryout. I also ask that the board strongly encourage the administration to be creative in finding ways to provide more support for the BSM hockey program, including, if at all possible, financial support. The Somerville players' families bore the full financial burden of the program this past year at a cost per player during the shortened season of $1,500. Next year, assuming the team is able to play a full season, the cost is expected to be approximately $2,200 per player. I believe that it is reasonable and fair if the high school should contribute an amount per player that is at least equal to the average cost per athlete for Somerville's other sports programs. Funding from Somerville could help cover the cost of transportation or ice time for games or practices. As I've noted in a past email to the board, my son is very proud to represent Somerville High School while playing on the BSM team. I'm certain that Somerville's other players feel the same way. We would all appreciate a greater level of support from the school district in the future. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other in-person comments related to agenda items? Ms. Matthews, do we have any online comments?
Yes, we do have three online comments at the moment. Wendy Cudick, 817 Hazelwood Ave in Middlesex, New Jersey, writes, "As a parent, as a parent at one of the BSM hockey partner schools, I urge you to please support the continued involvement and funding of Somerville athletes in our program. They are vital to the success of our program that we have spent many years building." The second comment is from Camilla Brown. "Why aren't the eighth graders having an eighth grade social? After all, the kids have been through, after all the kids have been through this past one year, they deserve to end the school year off right." And the third comment is from Michelle Kilpatrick. "Please support the hockey players at Somerville High School. There are going to be a significant amount of players on the team from Somerville High School next season, and the team was very successful this past season. Budget money is requested and helpful to support the players' expenses since the Somerville hockey parents supported the players completely out of their pockets this past season. With your budget support, the team may be able to increase the practice ice time, or increase coaches, or alleviate other expenses, which in turn will help to make the team even stronger in the upcoming seasons and encourage others to join and influence more school community support." Those are all the comments we have right now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. MacIntyre.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this point, could we have a motion to close the first public comment? Ms. Matthews, a second.
Second.
Ms. Van Horn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on for approval of our minutes, resolved at the Board of Education, approved the minutes of the Board of Education meeting as follows, March 16, 2021. Is there a second? Ms. Van Horn? Mr. Boyce, can you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo. Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Sergeil.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmich.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
At that point, I'd just like to take a moment for the Board President's report. I just had a few brief remarks tonight to begin the meeting. I want to thank the parents who came and the parents who made comments on behalf of the hockey team. I know these are challenging topics for parents and for families. As we talk about budget, I just want to acknowledge and thank you for coming out and expressing your opinions. You know, I think as, as parents and as people, or grandparents and teachers on this board of ed, we understand, you know, the emotion that goes into, I think, the decisions that go along with budgets. So I do want to thank people and acknowledge that you've been heard. But again, these are just very, very challenging budget decisions that have to be debated and discussed. You know, as I stated at each meeting this year, I want to thank our staff and our students and our families for their efforts this year, really as the district moves along this continuum of returning to increased normalcy. I think it's important that all members of the community remember that we're still addressing a variety of complex operational guidelines that are issued by the Department of Health, Department of Education, and via governor's executive orders. These things change daily. I think it's challenging at times when issues come out and new guidance comes out. It takes time to interpret those topics, and I think it's something, again, that a great deal of work goes into on a daily basis. I also want to, again, publicly acknowledge the overall efforts of our teachers to deliver daily instruction, working under just varied conditions at each level. I think it's important also to thank individual teachers, and, you know, I think parents go out of their way to do this, and the staff that works so hard to provide students opportunities to engage in extracurriculars at this time of year, and additional learning opportunities are so important. And some of those are represented in tonight's agenda as approvals, and again, just acknowledgements that we know those things are taking place, and it's with great appreciation that people should realize that. There are also a number of approvals on this agenda that signal the considerable efforts that are taking place behind the scenes. It's important to realize that while the district personnel continue to work on plans for providing services and events this year, this is the time of the school year in which planning for next year really ramps up in earnest. For instance, on tonight's agenda, we had the budget presentation for next year, there's approvals for summer programming and curriculum work, there are staff approvals for key summer activities. And I really mention this because all of this critical work within a normal year is time-sensitive, it's complex, it's something, again, that takes a great deal of effort. This year, it's occurring while the district continues to manage, really to manage all the other complex challenges that surround us right now. So I want to thank everybody for their efforts and continued support, and I know people are just working really, really hard to just make things happen this year in a way that is just continued for the last 12 months. So again, thank you to all the staff that are working on that. And then finally, just note about an agenda adjustment that we're going to make right now. Because we have some presentations that are taking place, we are going to move up one committee report, which is our student committee report, our student rep. So we know that you're very busy right now when you have other things, and you rushed out of work to get here to do this, and you have to go back to work. So I want to thank you for doing that. We're just going to move your report up to this point. Okay? All right. So it's all yours.
Is it working now? Okay, I'll use this one. Okay, so the first topic I wanted to discuss was prom. We are having a prom this year. Everyone is super excited about it, especially since the news came out more recently that it will be juniors and seniors combined again as a normal year, because originally it was supposed to be two separate proms with the seniors being on May 21st and the juniors being on June 4th. But due to new guidelines from the state, we are able to have it outdoors at the estate at Farrington Lake in East Brunswick with both grades able to attend. It's going to be outside with tents, and there's going to be a bunch of different tables, and students were able to purchase tickets the past few weeks, and it's 12 students per table. So you could get a group of your friends, and you'd go, and you'd sit at a table, you'd choose where you wanted to sit. And it was set up really well. You could buy tickets in the auditor, or not the auditorium, the gym, and you had time slots that you would sign up for online, and it was all very well put together even throughout this whole COVID thing. So everyone was super excited about prom being able to still happen. The next topic is the NHS induction, which will be happening tomorrow night, and it'll be livestreamed for parents to watch in on since they won't be able to attend because of COVID. Senior pictures are happening at normal time this year. I know my senior pictures were pushed back to the beginning of our senior year instead of the end of our junior year. So for the class of 2022, they are having their senior pictures right now and are going to continue taking place over the next few weeks, I believe. The Valkyrie is finishing up their articles for their next edition of the Valkyrie, so keep your eye out for that coming out in the next few weeks virtually. And I wanted to put in a little statement that there is an Instagram that was just created for SHS seniors to post their decisions on where they're going to be attending college. That account is called Ville Decisions 21, and students are allowed to send in a picture of themselves along with their major and what school they'll be attending in the fall, and they'll be posted with, like, a little description on the side of where they'll be going. So it's a good way to, like, see where all our friends are going and where, like, if teachers wanted to see where the students are going. I thought that was really cute. So I thought that that would be something nice to share for everyone to go see. And then, since I did bring it up last meet, the senior game that we were playing, it is on its last round. Unfortunately, my team did get out, but the winner should be announced on the Twitter by the end of the week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Kara?
I will be attending Slippery Rock University in the fall.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
I have one more question. So you said the Valkyrie newspaper is virtual?
Yes.
How does it access that as parents?
I believe it's posted through the Somerville High School website, if I'm not mistaken.
All right, Kara, thank you so much for that report.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the prom and everything else, too. It's exciting that those things are taking place.
Yes, very exciting.
Yeah, it's great. All right. Okay, so if you have to go back to work, this is a good time to exit stage left. Mr. Boyce, you got that. Mr. Sergeil is here, right? Okay, outstanding. Okay, and a chair and all. Okay. All right. All right, Dr. Tean.
All right, I'm going to start off with district highlights before we do the budget, since that's a little bit longer. So as Mr. Kimmich said, that the district is continuing to look at all the different options for students, for graduations, proms, dances, get-togethers. Each building will be communicating what the decisions are as they make them, but it is an ever-changing process. So just bear with us. So for VDV grades PS5, in the month of March, hold on, sorry, my mic's own fell. In the month of March, the kindergarten teachers and students worked with Blankets of Hope for the second year in a row. Blankets of Hope is an educational nonprofit helping students practice empathy and kindness by donating blankets, each paired with an inspirational handwritten note to those that are experiencing homelessness. The Vandevere staff generously donated money through a jeans day to purchase 96 blankets. The kindergarten students engaged in a kindness workshop, learning all about homelessness and how we can help people experiencing homelessness in our community. Each student wrote an uplifting letter to attach to their blanket. Here's an excerpt from one letter. "Dear friend, I hope this blanket keeps you warm. You are brave. You are strong. You are loved." All 96 blankets were donated to ship in Somerville. Vandevere celebrated autism and awareness and acceptance the week of April 19th. The week kicked off with staff and students wearing superhero, superhero shirts, capes, and other insignia demonstrating the superheroes within all of us. The teachers donned the autism awareness ribbons of interlocked colorful puzzle pieces reflecting the mystery and complexity of autism, along with the diversity of those living with autism, and the brightness signaling hope through research and increased awareness. Staff members also contributed $5 to participate in the company clothes and/or jeans day, where the proceeds were donated to the organization Parents of Autistic Children. And the Vandevere Variety Show premiered on April 15th through the VDV website. This year's show highlighted the talents and skills of our fourth and fifth grade student participants. Students had the option to record performances after school with VDV staff support or submit videos created at home. This year's video montage included singing, playing instruments, dancing, skateboarding, motorcycle riding, comedy, and so much more. VDV staff members closed the performance with a medley of dances through time. The show can still be accessed via the school's website, and you don't want to miss it. For Somerville Middle School, Spring School, Spring School Spirit Week was the week of April 19th. It was pretty exciting, with a special acknowledgement and tribute to Autism Awareness Month, with Tuesday being Wear Blue Day. Monday was Favorite Sports Team Day, Wednesday was Pyjama Day, Thursday was Favorite Decade Day, and Friday was Bulldog Attire Day. Led by teacher Sally Stanek, her team and the students have created autism awareness luminaries, which are blue flameless candles in a white paper bag in support of Autism Speaks, and light it up blue. Ms. Stanek and her students placed the autism symbol, which is a puzzle peach, piece, and affixed it to the bag. She created one for all the classrooms and displayed the bags on the front entrance of the school in recognition and tribute to the efforts of so many who support autism awareness. Mrs. Stanek's class is also selling autism awareness pins for $1. Eighth grade graduation gown distribution started this month, and students will take pictures in their gowns for a slideshow presentation. The middle school is planning for an in-person graduation in June. In May, SMS will hold Challenge Day. Challenge Day is a social-emotional learning experience meant to support students unlearn harmful habits, experience vulnerability as a pillar to restore strength, and enable them to experience the freedom of full expression through the lens of compassion, connection, and diversity. And we started our algebra prep and readiness course this month. These efforts are in response to our Equity Initiative, which includes opening up opportunities for all students in algebra. We are very excited about the unexpectedly high number of students who enrolled and attended our first class in session. For SMS, both softball and baseball season are underway. Practices have started, students are excited, and we look forward to more students participating. Access testing has started for our ELL students. Testing is from April and will continue through May. This assessment is meant to measure students' progress in learning English. And finally, in May, the Spring Band Concert anticipates creating a pre-recorded experience similar to our winter concert, and Mr. Loretta and the students are excited about the experience and cannot wait for families and the public to see all the hard work. And that concludes the district highlights portion, and we'll move on to our public hearing. Mr. Boyce.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Tean. My name is Brian Boyce. I'm the business administrator for the district, and I'm going to lead off the budget presentation for tonight. But before I do, I just want to point out this picture that we came across recently. It was Somerville High School in the early 1900s. It was actually built, the building was built in 1905. So I just want to challenge the people from Somerville out there to think about what that building is today, and then we'll show that on the last slide. Tonight's presentation, just to present a quick overview, we're going to talk about budget goals quickly. Dr. Tean will talk about academic enhancements. We'll talk about the general fund appropriations. Where do we spend money? General fund revenues, how do we pay for that? Enrollment, and then finally, property tax impact. It is important for us to stay grounded or aligned when we're making budget decisions. There are many different competing priorities, especially with respect to where we spend money. At the same time, we feel the pressure to hold down spending to keep property taxes affordable for taxpayers. So keeping, staying aligned helps us balance those priorities. This may be hard to read, but that's okay, because these budget goals that I'll go through quickly are actually going to be covered throughout the presentation. We've determined over the years that we think about 10 budget goals is the right number, some of them general, some of them specific. Budget alignment is, touches on just what I mentioned earlier. Education excellence, technology support, having the proper technology devices especially important these days as we, as we survive the pandemic. Structural integrity is a very important thing that we focus on. Property tax rate stability. I just want to stop for one second and talk about this. Property tax rate stability is not only related to the annual operating budget. The general fund tax levy supports the annual operating budget, but what, there is one other levy that's made up of the school taxes, and that's the debt service levy. That's debt that the, that the district is paying on, debt as a result of referendums. So what we try and do here is pay for capital projects in annual budgets so that we postpone referendums inevitably, so that there is no spike in a tax rate. So that's important to keep in mind when you're trying to grade a district on their property tax rate stability. It's just not the annual budget, it's their ability to hold off referendums. These are specific budget goals that Dr. Tean is going to get into, each one of them in depth as we make, or as he makes its way through the academic enhancements. Dr. Tean?
Okay, I don't know about how in-depth, but we'll see. So the accomplishments enhancements are basically a summary of what we've accomplished over the last year and what we plan to address as we move forward. Can you click? No, I'm sorry. Since you got it. So for accomplishments, even during pandemic, we were able to successfully achieve some of the things that we, many of the things that we had set out, plus more. So when you look at this list, one, the top one on the list there is the professor-in-residence, which is somebody that works with our staff, primarily our new staff, and provides them support so that they're the best educators that they can be. The, we successfully launched our tomorrow's Teacher Academy, and as part of that, our students, and hopefully everyone will catch it with their, the Vella that's being released, I think it's this coming week, our participating students from the academy are actually creating a Vella lesson for the kids to watch. So you should check that out. We provided PD in mathematics, writing, foundations, and equity. Those are things that we had targeted to do, and we were successful in doing it. In addition to that, we also provided professional development in American Reading Company, which is for the elementary school in reading. We also had, because of the pandemic, we had to provide so that our teachers were best prepared, professional development on how to use the many virtual tools that were available, and also how to engage students and be, provide engaging lessons to students both in person and virtually, since the virtual environment was new for everyone. In addition, no, you can back up. In addition to that, we also provided equity facilitator training, so that, as, as that has been one of our goals for many years now, working on diversity and equity, we provided that training to all those participating members from the different buildings and districts team so that we're better equipped to handle the facilitation of the training as we move forward. We began dismantling barriers to student learning opportunities by changing some of our structural practices that have been in place for a long time. And we provided weekly communications through a Friday letter, which we know in the very beginning was very long, and we've been able to scale it back but still get the pertinent information in there. And we joined CJ Pride, which is And we joined CJ Pride, which is an organization that really works to find diverse teaching candidates, and they had a huge job fair. It was crazy, but it was a great job fair, and we found some really good candidates. And these aren't necessarily, when we go to these job fairs, it's not necessarily to hire now, because we might not have any openings, but it gives us an opportunity to screen candidates for any potential opening that might come up in the future. Other enhancements were to add AP Research and AP Computer Science Principles, AP Environmental Science, and the Tomorrow's Teacher Course. So we were able to expand our current offerings for more student opportunities. We secured new Algebra I and Algebra II textbooks, and we also researched mathematics programs for our K to 8. So we're trying to support and enhance what we're offering within our mathematics program district-wide. We are always going through, and we continue to go through, updating our curriculum in all subject areas. We formulated a VDV schedule that will allocate consistent time for both social studies and science, and we improved access to courses with support. Now, these two slides of items, that's not exhaustive. We did a lot more than this, but these are the ones we wanted to highlight for you tonight. So looking forward, what you see in the slides that's in red, those are our district goals. So as Brian had said before, when we're building a budget, we're always keeping in mind of what is it that we hope to achieve? And the things that we hope to achieve are our actual goals. So I've listed some of the things that we're planning for enhancements for the 2122 school year, and that's a school psychologist at SHS, which will provide supporting social, emotional, and mental health needs. We're planning on providing post-pandemic mental health supports. We've been doing a lot of mental health supports throughout this school year, but we know as students come back to school, especially those that have been 100% virtual, they're going to need more supports for the transition. So we're planning on having that there as well. Fully implement restorative practices district-wide. That's part of our Building Culture Competency and Equity District goal. Work towards achievement of building and district equity goals. We've already formed our district teams and our building teams, and they're currently going through the process, and that will be fully launched for next year. We're going to build personalized student career interest inventories for all students in grades 6 to 12. That is part of our Student Center Counseling Services supports, guidance, and programs. We're also going to coordinate an approach of guidance services pre-K to 12, so that we create a robust and proper sequence of effort, so that we're not having one building do one thing and the other building do something else, and it's disjointed. We want it to be continuous throughout. We want to form an IRS Coordinator and Media Specialist at Vandevere. This will help with improving student achievement. Social Studies teacher at SHS to help with a new course that we have created, which is called Freshman Seminar, which will support students as they transition from a middle school setting into a high school setting, at the same time integrating in financial literacy. We've been hearing a lot about how people really wanted financial literacy to be more of an in-person course. So we're integrating it into this. And then last but of course not least, and once again, it's more extensive than what's up here, but expand academic opportunities through Option 2, and this will be a long improving student achievement as well. Mr. Boyce, over to you.
Thank you. We can jump right into appropriations now, general fund appropriations. We'll talk about debt service near the end. So up at the top, we have regular education. We have cost centers down the left-hand side of the page, and then we have it presented on a comparative basis. The proposed budget, what we're here talking about compared to this year, the 2021 school year. So regular education is all the gen ed, teachers, salaries, textbooks, supplies, and so forth. As you can see, we're, my thing doesn't really work. Okay, I don't have my pointer. But we're up 3.9% in that area, a little bit more than you would expect, but that line includes the additional high school social studies teacher Dr. T. Ham talked about, and also Vandevere Media Specialist teacher, who will replace what was once an instructional aid in that position. Special education aid or special education expenditures or appropriations are actually down. That is a result of a net decrease of five special education outside placement students. Therefore, we see a decrease in that area. Co-curricular and athletics, 3.6% decrease, it's fairly level. Other program includes bilingual and basic skills after-school programs, again, fairly level, 3.2% increase, only $12,000. Support includes health, speech, OTPT, guidance, child study team. All those cost areas are up 8%, but that includes an extra three-fifths psychologist Dr. T. Ham talked about at the high school to help us with the mental health supports. Administration shows down, it shows that it's a decrease, but sometimes there's recoding of individuals between years. So if you take support and administration together, it's actually a 2.4% increase, more in line with what you would expect to see. Operations and maintenance, fairly level. Transportation normally moves in the same direction as our outside special education placements, so as you would expect, that also is decreased as a result of our net five less special ed students. Employee benefits is a major area of our budget. It's driven primarily this year in two ways. First of all, claims, so we need to pay insurance companies or reimburse them essentially for the claims they're paying on behalf of our employees. We take a look at the last 12 months in order to come up with the rates when we negotiate that with the health benefit carriers. In addition to that cost, though, there's a new cost that we're seeing for the first time this year, and it has to do with a law called Chapter 44 that passed on July 1st, 2020, that mandated school boards create two additional health plans for employees. The first one came online on January 1st this year, and the next one is scheduled to come on board August 1st, but it doesn't appear as if that's going to happen right now. We'll have to wait and see. Both of these plans reduce the amount of contributions employees pay towards health benefits. So if employees are paying less of a share of those health benefits, the Board of Education is picking up a greater share. So we have to anticipate what that's going to cost us. For the New Jersey EHP, which came online on January 1st, we had one-third of our employees move into that plan. So that is going to cost the district money, and it's going to cost district more and more as years go on, as the contributions do not keep pace as we think, keep pace with what the increases we've become used to seeing in health benefits. Jumping down, so that subtotal you see there with a 3.0% increase, that's current expense. You can think of current expense as the operating budget. So if you want to look at things that are comparable, look at current expense and all the items included in current expense, because below that, you have things like capital projects, which can vary quite a bit from year to year. In the 2122 school year, the $3.9 million, we have several capital projects that we're doing, and this ties into what I said before, that we're trying to find a way to include capital projects in our annual budgets. It does two things for us. We don't live with slowly declining facilities and get to the point where we have to do a referendum to fix all of it. So we have to live with the slowly declining facilities if we go that direction, and then we have to live with a tax spike. So in this budget, we are doing several roof section replacements at Vandevere School. I'll show you a slide later about that, including a rooftop unit on the gym. We are replacing the high school track, and we are providing a storage building at Vandevere School, which has been desperately needed for probably well over 20 years. We have trailers in the back of Vandevere that is not the proper storage, and it's also an eyesore. We're finally going to bite the bullet and build a proper storage garage at Vandevere School. We also have a $125,000 deposit to Capital Reserve, which is a savings for us for future capital projects. This $125,000 deposit is dedicated to athletic turf fields replacement. We now have three in the back of the high school. We really are looking good in terms of our facilities at the high school for athletics, and this allows us to save money over time so that when those fields reach the end of their useful life, which is 10, 12 years, we'll be able to replace them, and we won't be doing fundraising and things like that in order to replace those fields. If we take that same current expense that's analyzed in this slide by cost centers, we've analyzed it a different way. This way by salaries, health benefits, other employee benefits such as worker comp, unemployment insurance, pension contributions, tuition, outside placement tuition for our special education students, and all other operating expenditures, which includes heat, electricity, it includes supplies, textbooks, contracted services, technology devices. All of that stuff only represents 15% of that current expense. So you can see salaries and benefits is the biggest chunk of our school budget. If we take a look at those areas I just mentioned here and see how much each one of those increased for the 2122 budget, we see salaries is 707,000 of it, health benefits 838,000, in large part due to the law that we're now dealing with, the new law. Other employee benefits such as workers comp and unemployment insurance is actually down. Tuition, as I mentioned earlier, is actually down, and all their operating expenses are up 76,000. So this is the roof section, roofs are replaced on schools in sections, because the schools are built in different times and so forth. So we are going to do F1, F2, H, J1, and J2. J1 is the gym, and there's a rooftop unit, and we're replacing that rooftop unit as we do the roof replacement. This is the pole barn, this is just an example of what it may look like that we're going to have out at Vandevere, which will be able to store things properly, probably even some athletic things that happened over at the high school, and things that we can't find room for in the school. Track replacement is just simply that, the track replacement. It does also include the perimeter fencing, which is, needs to be replaced at the same time if you saw the condition of it, and it also includes the paving around the perimeter of the track. If a taxpayer out there wants to get a sense of how is this district spending comparatively? How do I know it's the right level of spending that I'm paying taxes for? This is one good way to do it. It's something called the budgetary per pupil cost. It's calculated, or it's generated by the Department of Education. Nobody here in Somerville generates this data. We present it here so people can see how we fare compared to other districts of like size and configuration. In Somerset County, that's Bound Brook, North Plainfield, and Somerset Hills Regional. So you can take a look at the numbers there, and you can see, let's say, 18, 19, 15,582 for Somerville. We are the lowest in that column except for Bound Brook. Bound Brook is consistently the lowest. Not that Bound Brook is better or we're worse, it just gives you a sense of what the communities are generally willing to spend for their schools, and this shows you how we compare. Also included in this chart is the other, is the categories that the state provides for people, taxpayers. It's actually called the Taxpayer Guide to Education Spending, for taxpayers to get an independent look and can make an independent judgment on their school's spending. They include state average K-12, state median K-12, state average, all operating types, state median, all operating. You can see that we are consistently lower than those numbers as well as you move across the chart. And actually, if you take a look closely, most times, in most years, our number is not only the lowest number in the column except for Bound Brook, but we're also the lowest number in the year prior to it. So that gives you a sense that we are, you know, at least average, or right around average, probably a little bit below average compared to this data. And I just included the years prior to this too, since we've been keeping track of this, because it's the same going all the way back to 10, 11, and probably well before that, where we're the lowest in each column and the lowest in the column prior to it also. This is the same information, just depicted in a different visual. You can see the orange line across the top is Somerville spending compared to all of those other categories in District I you saw in the last slide. Moving on to general fund revenues. How we pay for those appropriations. General fund tax levy, that is the number in our budget, the general fund tax levy I mentioned earlier, that we are permitted to increase 2%. So that 23.418 million in the 2021 column can go up 2%. That is, where is it? To us, $468,000. In this budget, we are not increasing that levy, the 468,000. In fact, we're decreasing it by 27,000. State aid, state aid is up six point, or it's, tuition, let's move on to tuition, that's the next number. Tuition, except for $40,000 in each column, is tuition we received from Branchburg to educate their children at Somerville High School. And I'm going to go into more detail in a slide later about the Branchburg tuition. State aid is up 12.98%, and it is in large part the reason why we can decide to actually decrease the general fund tax levy. We are part of a group of districts that are considered underfunded, and the state is doing over seven-year periods, are taking away money from districts that are considered overfunded, in their opinion, according to their formula, and shifting it over to districts like us that are underfunded, underfunded based on our demographics and our socioeconomic status. So we are the beneficiary of that law as too, and it is a big help for us in our budget. Federal aid, it stays relatively consistent, relatively small dollars. Fund balance, tuition reserve, and prior year encumbrances. The district relies on $1.25 million of surplus every year to balance its budget. If it happens to end a prior fiscal year with more than that, it'll take that amount, it'll take that amount in excess of $1.25 million and apply it to a one-time purpose, because we cannot reasonably expect to generate more than $1.25 million every year. And we don't want to over-rely on surplus one year to solve budget problems, only to come into the next year and not have that same amount of surplus creating a budget hole for us. Miscellaneous stays relatively level, and we have a withdrawal from Capital Reserve, which you can think of that as a savings, a savings for future capital projects. You can also think of it as a reserve for future taxpayer relief, because we're saving money when we catch a break for whatever reason, and saving it so that we can pay for capital projects in cash without going to the taxpayers for a referendum and incurred debt as a result of it. So that $2.1 million you see in the 2122 column is for the Vandevere roof replacements I mentioned, and also the Vandevere storage building. Banked cap is another piece of information that taxpayers can take a look at if they're interested in gauging how their district is spending. When this column says generate, that is the amount of cap room that we've generated as savings. We did not, in 10, in 11, 12, we did not spend, we did not increase the general fund tax levy, we did not ask taxpayers for the full 2%. We asked for less than that, less than that by 242,000. The state allows us to save that cap room, it's not actually dollars, cap room, for the next three years. If you don't use it within the next three years, you've lost the ability to use that cap room. So we've consistently generated cap, excess cap, because we did not raise taxes up to the 2%. And for the first couple of years, we lost, we just lost the ability to use that cap room. And as you look down the side, we've consistently generated, including this year where we're up to now 495,000 that the budget we're talking about, that we're under what we're legally permitted to raise the general fund tax levy. Branchburg tuition, this is the slide I mentioned about the Branchburg tuition. It is up 6.1%, which generally is, doesn't make our Branchburg counterparts happy. It is something we place a lot of importance on. That's our colleagues over there, it's our sister district. We, money will separate people quickly. We pay attention to try and keep the tuition level. We have things that are making it, you know, enrollment can go up and down for both districts, which throws that out of the way, and also capital projects. So for here, we analyzed the Branchburg tuition, and what they pay us for 2122 is reflecting a 2.5%. a 2.5% increase. That's about what you would expect. Capital, however, is up quite a bit, and that's 901,000 is Branchburg's share of that new track. It's only one project, we couldn't make it any less. If we could have, we would have, and then that number wouldn't be so great, and it would drive down Branchburg's ultimate increase in tuition. Thankfully, we do a lot of talking with Branchburg and good communication, and we're able to work through these things when they do happen, when we're unable to avoid them. District debt service, in 2005, the district's debt was at 32.5 million. I'll have to do those off memory. That was after the 2004 referendum. As you can see, we have just been paying off debt since then, we have not incurred any more debt. All while doing capital projects in our budget, so we're not letting the facilities go or to gear up for a new referendum. Hopefully, we're pushing off referendums into the future to the point where we're not even thinking that they're, that they're anywhere close. So at this point, we will end the 21, 22 school year with nine points, approximately 92, 9.2 million of outstanding debt. And if we can make it nine more years to 2030, we'll have actually no debt, and we'll have a big drop-off in property taxes too, because we'll have no more debt service tax levy. Quick slide on enrollment, it didn't affect the budget really, but it's just a point of interest, people might be interested to see in March 2020, at the beginning of a pandemic, where the enrollment was. We have seen a decrease since then, for all types of different reasons. It just so happens that we've needed, you know, we couldn't, we didn't have the ability to reduce staff because we needed staff to accommodate the hybrid schedule. So we needed more staff, and we actually had less enrollment. It kind of worked out that we were able just to use the staff that we, that we needed because we needed extra staff for the hybrid schedule. So it didn't affect the budget, but it is interesting to see, it's something we actually, we keep an eye on very closely to see what class sizes are doing, whether they're getting too big or even too small. We do expect it to bounce back next year. Property tax levies, I mentioned both of these earlier, the general fund is actually down a little over a tenth of a percent, like we discussed, we did not raise it to 468,000 that we could. The debt service levy is fairly level, debt service, debt service schedules are structured that way, so we have a $3,000 increase usually every year. So that's up slightly, but the net result is a tenth of a percent decrease in the overall school district, the both school district tax levies. Property tax impact, because you take those levies and you convert them to a calendar year basis, and then you introduce ratables to the equation, you don't get tax increases that are necessarily the same as your tax levy increases or decreases. So in this case, we did have a drop-off from ratables, we converted our tax levies to a calendar year basis, and it does result in a 2.3, 2.32% increase in our school tax rate, which is about $137,000, $137 on an average home in town, which I believe is Questions? And that is what the old Somerville High School is now, which some people don't get right away. I know I didn't.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. That was a very detailed presentation. I guess if there are questions from the board, or any discussion points from Mr. Boyce, this will be the time to bring them up. Again, Mr. Boyce, thank you very much for all of your work in putting together the budget, arranging the presentation, just, it's a ton of work that, again, I mentioned, just happens behind the scenes, and it's something, again, that, you know, we're very fortunate to have you because you've been here for a very long time, and you know how the district operates, and I think it's something, again, that the whole community is very, very fortunate. So, all right, so moving on to report of board items and committee reports. We did our student board report already, so at this point, Mr. Carlson, can you move our finance items, please?
Absolutely. Okay, we're gonna, I have a motion to approve items 1 through 10, to be moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Item number one, the board secretary's financial reports. Item number two, the acceptance of monthly reports. Number three, payroll. Number four, the bills list for Vandavere and Somerville Middle School. Number five, line item transfers. Number six, non-public school security aid program. Number seven, non-public school security aid program. Number eight, school bus emergency evacuation drill report. Number nine, change order for the window balancer replacement at Somerville Middle School. And number 10, capital reserve withdrawal for the roof replacement and related work at Vandavere Elementary School.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and discussion? Mr. Boyce, you do a roll, please.
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Satan.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Sergeill.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimick.
Yes.
Okay, I also have a motion to approve that items number 11 through 18 to be moved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Item number 11, the bills list for Somerville High School in district-wide. Item number 12, the adoption of the 2021, 22 school district budget as listed in the agenda. Item number 13, the 2021, 2023 school year's inter-local transportation services resolution agreement for participation in coordinated transportation services. Item number 14, track reconstruction project at Somerville High School. Item number 15, roof replacement and related work at Vandavere Elementary School and Somerville High School. Item number 16, the disposal of obsolete materials. Item number 17, Somerville High School stadium audio system replacement. And item number 18, field trips is listed in the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carlson. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Matthews, second. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Boyce, you do a roll, please.
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Satan.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Sergeill.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimick.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boyce. Moving on to curriculum, Ms. Van Horn.
The curriculum committee last met on March 16th. We shared the vision for the summer Cressa-funded enrichment program. This will be an enrichment-style camp with a focus on teacher-passion projects that will weave in Title I supports. We shared the progress on the K-12 social studies curriculum rewrite. The NJ DOE required all districts to report K-12 on all student progress towards the standards in ELA math and science. We're able to leverage our Lincoln and I-Ready reports and are coming up with alternative assessments in K-5. We discussed the progress on our three-year plan to overhaul math, K-10. We're currently looking at the adoption of a new math program at Vandavere for next year. Teachers in most grade levels have agreed to pilot the units, and we're on track to make the shift next year. This summer, we're going to have the summer music and K-7 summer enrichment and targeted tutoring. We discussed the plan for freshman seminar, and we discussed making the Somerville Teaching Academy our next CTE course of study at the high school. And I motion to approve that item one be moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Number one, the Chrisa Summer Enrichment Camp for rising grades 1 through 7.
Second.
Second.
Is that, Mr. Carlson?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Mr. Boyce, you do a roll.
Yes. Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Satan.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Sergeill.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimick.
Yes.
And motion to approve that items 2 through 7 be approved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, unconfirmed case at Somerville High School. Number three, the approval of the 2021 summer hours. Number four, the virtual algebra summer enrichment program for rising grades 7, 8, and 9. Number five, the Somerville Fine and Performing Arts Program for the summer. Number six, the change in Board of Education meeting date, changing our May 4, 2021 meeting to May 11, 2021. And number seven, travel expenditure resolution.
Second.
Ms. Satan, what's the second? Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Boyce.
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
I have stand on five, but yes to the rest.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Satan.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Sergeill.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimick.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Pontillo, building some crowns?
Yes, Mr. Gabriel, this is really the heart of work. It was considerable, this is repairs, how they've been done. I'll just state that all work for it is a big, completed, they're coming up.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for Ms. Pontillo? Moving on, Technology Committee, Ms. Satan.
The Technology Committee met on April 19th. My commendations extended to the entire department. They created, completed a Systems 3000 web portal transfer, which is a lot of data movement, and they did it in a safe and efficient way. Grade 2 Chromebook exchange is completed, the preschool devices, due to the hybrid learning, preschool students need new Chromebooks that they can manipulate appropriately, and we'll get them ready for kindergarten devices. The staff devices have all been purchased. Cybersecurity continues, they continue to work on increasing the security for us, and there will be reports on that coming when it's completed. And state testing is canceled for the spring. So that is a huge burden off not only the technology department, but the students and the staff.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Satan. You have more to come on state testing, I guess, at some point, so.
The fall.
But that wasn't really for the spring.
It's not canceled forever.
That's right. Thank you for that report. Mr. Sergeill, athletics and student activities.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Dr. Tean. Two comments first, I apologize for being late, and I also apologize for the gentleman who was addressing the board with his remarks about hockey. Just to follow up on what the President, Kimick, said, I, you know, I'm a hockey fan too, I'm a diehard hockey fan, and I appreciate all those comments, and I understand the passion, and, you know, and I, I can say that I am very proud for all of our Somerville hockey players who follow their passion and lace their skates. I was very proud to congratulate them on winning the Sherrod Cup, and I was there, watching the live stream as well, so, very proud of our Somerville students there. Second, I also always want to recognize Athletic Director Davis and all of his efforts with him and his staff, especially during these times. It appears as if times are getting better, and slowly but surely, hopefully we'll be back to a better, a better process come the fall. We are going to meet, working with him on solidifying dates so the committee can meet with Doc, I'm sorry, Athletic Dr. Davis, to discuss the end of year and what the plans are for the 2021, 2022 season. So with that said, I will just do a sound check. All right, and we are set to go. First things first, one thing I failed to mention last, last March was that Kyle Rowland also scored 1,000 points and made the Skyline Conference Points List, not to mention he made the conference list for three pointers as well, so I want to congratulate him. So let's go to wrestling, we're going to take it to the mat, shall we? The wrestlers finished the season with a proud 9-4 record. Highlights includes Jack, now you see him, now you're pinned, C along with Nick Treback completing the NJ SIA individual wrestling tournament last week. Jack C. placed in the top 24. And let's also give a huge go Villa Joey Aldrich, who although a little short in the state, he finished in the top 32, and has a lot of building to work on for the offseason. Also, let's give it up for the notorious Nick Treback and Zorro himself, Gerald Zukowicz, on a great wrestling career, wearing the orange and black. And I would be remiss if I didn't give one of the hugest shout-outs to Froshman, Valerie V. for Victory Maldonado for placing fourth in the New Jersey State Tournament and in the 107-pound weight class. Also leading by example is Jumping Gillian Dugenio for finishing eighth in the States at 128 pounds, setting the example that anyone can strive for success. Some other notables, the tennis team is off to a 4-1 start, girls lax is 1-0, and the boys lax is 3-1. As Dr. Tean mentioned, the Somerville Middle School softball, baseball programs are off to a start as well. I look forward to reporting more about that next month. Okay, let's go to the golf. All right, the Somerville Golf opened their season yesterday, not yesterday, but last week at RVCC with a 170, 242 victory led by Cruz in Connor Flanagan. Right now, the grips must be properly fastened for their rolling to a 5-0 start. All I have to say is peace, love, and pars. So, track and field, the track and field girls team kicked off the competition at the 59th Annual Somerset County Relays on Saturday. Bridgette Lucero earned her wings on her running shoes with a 4x800 and 4x1600 finish. All right, Brian Murph Murphy took the pole vault prize, Matt Cappanaro, Spencer Talish, Vinnie Meridi, and Brandon Yarozinsky leaped their way to the first in the shuttle hurdles. Okay, and Spencer Talish also took second in the 400-meter hurdles, and the 4x800 relay, Nazir Williams, Mark the Big Man Bigsby, and Paul Jali, excuse me, Jalioto, and Nate Lourde took third. All right, let's talk about the teams that are living the diamond life. All right, the softball team, the softball bats are off to a 2-1 start with their recent victory Monday against Del Val, Carly the Marotta Maroni, Carolene Stierle, and her Grace Jensen, along with Abby the Law Lawson and Allison Lopack are leading the charge with the big bats. Okay? Baseball, Mr. Matty and Timmy of the Wright Brothers, along with pitchers Tenacious T., Timmy Petuco, Sean Scott, Matt Al Dante, Misselli, the Napster Eric Knapp, and the rest of the baseball squad are off to one of their best starts in recent memory. Last night, they came back from behind to defeat a ranked Elizabeth Town squad, 10-9, with one of the Wright Brothers, Timmy Wright, driving home the winning run. We're going to go to clubs and activities, let's go to the Winter Guard and music. Don't forget the showcase of the arts last month, well done, okay? The arts, the arts display was fantastic, the beautiful music, and this always fills me with the spirit, watching, watching those groups perform. Well done always to our Winter Guard and Jazz Choir Ensemble. And let's give it up for our Winter Guard also, as well, receiving an excellent rating in the WGI main virtual event and the group semifinals. With all the hurdles they worked through, they focused on the brother and sisterhood and tapped into their inner hashtag, "Build by Example." We could not be prouder. And guys, and mark your calendars for the, for the, I'm calling it the Festival of Music, I do not have it written down here, but May 6 and May 15 will be the Best of Broadway for the choir, and then we'll have the music festival on the 16th with the choir, with the choir and the jazz band performing. So, and now we're going to go to robotics. The robotics team is wrapping up their season, having submitted all the necessary videos and deliverables for our virtual competitions. Results, results are slowly starting to roll, but right now, the team holds the highest score for the power port challenge and placed third overall in group rankings. Our group is made up of 25 teams from all over the country, including teams from California, Wisconsin, Georgia, among others, as well as teams around the world, such as Istanbul, Hazafan, Hadaram, and more. 1,400 teams worldwide participated in the skills challenge this year, and the robotics team placed 56 of them all. The team held their final in-season build session last Saturday, where they are preparing for the next set of projects coming up, and they reflect on the successes as a team, okay, despite these trying times. And as always, thank you, Talika Zar, the team always recognized the Board of Education for their efforts and their, and their unconditional, continuous support. So now, I do have the music here because I haven't done this in a while. These are for all the seniors that have dedicated their life to their sports, and now they are signing on. I'm first going to recognize, okay- So now, I do have the music here, because I haven't done this in a while. These are for all the seniors that have dedicated their life to their sports, and now they are signing on. I'm first going to recognize, okay, I have a proud mom over there. Noah Saden will be loading up the boat and sailing to Coastal Carolina U for chemistry and drama, not to mention Karen Matthews over here, who also mentioned she's going to Slippery Rock University. Okay, football, Owen O'Neill, Ithaca College. Sal Ademonte, Whiting University, the Cookie Monster Desert Dario, IMG Academy, A.J. Penya, Milford Academy, and fencing, Benito Hegera Touche is going to Lafayette. Field hockey, Jenna Coulter is going to Scranton. The other football, okay, Vanessa Leon will be playing for the Kane Cougars. Herman Espinoza, William Passon University, and I did mention last month, but she's on the list again, Ashley Franklin will be going to FDU Madison. Track and field, Evan Ruby is running for East Strasburg University. Wrestling, Nick Treback is also going to East Strasburg. All right, on the diamond, Matt Misselli is going to Stony Brook University, Tim Wright, RVCC. And last but not least, the softball diamonders. Carolene Stierle is going to De Sales, Grace Jensen, Ramapo College. And lacrosse, Andrew Muller is going to Stevens Tech. I look forward to presenting on more college signings next month. And that is my report before I get into the resolutions. However, I do have one more thing to do, and this is from my friend Dan Pontillo, who gave me the great idea last month. Here you go, Dan, this is for you, buddy. And, Mr. Kimmick, President Kimmick, Madam Vice President, that is my report. I do have two resolutions here that I'm proud to announce. The first resolution is the Somerville High School Chess Club, resolved that the Board of Education approved the newly created chess club at Somerville High School for the 2021 school year. The second resolution is, as mentioned before, the junior senior prom in 2021, resolved that the Board of Education approved the Somerville High School Junior Senior Prom to be held outdoors on Friday, May 21st, from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. at the estate at Farrington Lake in East Brunswick, New Jersey. I so move.
Second.
Ms. Matthews is second. Thank you, Mr. Sergeal. Any discussion? Can't top that.
Although the chess club, I don't, I can't recall the last time I won a chess match, so can I join this club?
Sure.
I'm sure you could do anything you want.
I could use all the pointers I can.
As long as you report on it, you can join it.
Absolutely.
All good. All right, Mr. Boyce?
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo. Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Sergeal.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmick.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Tean.
Okay, for personnel, PS8, resolved that the Board of Education approve and/or accept the following appointments upon recommendations superintendent schools. Appointments and salaries are contingent upon verified documentation. To accept the retirement of Amy Burns, Instructional Assistant at Vandivere Elementary School. Two, to accept the retirement of Mary Jo Thornburg, Instructional Assistant at Vandivere Elementary School. And number three, to accept the retirement of Joanne Deveraux, Teacher of Special Education at Vandivere Elementary School. Number four, to approve the paid maternity leave of absence for Samantha Bonaduce and unpaid childcare leave of absence for the dates listed. Number five, to approve the appointment of Andrew Flanagan to the leave replacement position for Samantha Bonaduce at the dates listed. Number six, to approve the unpaid childcare leave of absence for Christina Brophy for the dates listed. Seven, to approve the paid maternity leave of absence for Courtney Grace and an unpaid childcare leave of absence for the dates listed. Number eight, to approve an unpaid FMLA leave of absence for Deborah Corezani for the dates listed. Number nine, to accept the resignation of Debbie Corezani effective June 5th. Number 10, to approve an unpaid childcare leave of absence for Naswa Badawi for the dates listed. Number 11, to approve the appointment of Julian Churchman to the leave replacement position for Mr. Dublock for the dates listed. Number 12, to approve the listed individuals to the position of coach for the girls on the run program at Vandivere. Number 13, to approve the appointment of the listed individuals to the position of co-coach for the girls softball team at Somerville Middle School. Number 15, to approve the appointment of Bruce Harms to the position of head baseball coach at Somerville Middle School. Number 15, to approve the appointment of the following, of listed individuals to the position of advisor for the National Junior Honor Society at Somerville Middle School. Number 16, to approve the appointment of Anisha Hobbs to write curriculum for grade seven English Language Arts. And on the last page of the agenda, there's an addendum in the Personnel section for PS8, and that's to approve a paid maternity leave of absence for Melanie Scott, Teacher of Special Education at Vandivere Elementary School, and unpaid childcare leave of absence of the dates listed.
Can we have a motion for that, please?
Motion.
Mr. Carlson, second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Saden. Mr. Boyce, you do a poll, please.
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion first, I apologize.
Mr. President, I believe item number five, the date should be May 11th, 2021, and not 2020. Is that correct, Dr. Tean?
Yeah.
Yes, should be 2021. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, thank you, Mr. Jess. All right, Mr. Boyce?
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo. Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Sergeal.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn. Mr. Kimmick.
Yes.
For grades nine through 12, district-wide, resolved that the Board of Education approve and/or accept the following appointments upon recommendations superintendent schools. Appointments and salaries contingent upon verified documentation. Number 17, to accept the resignation due to abandonment of position of Heather Duda, effective April 27th. Number 18, to approve a change in dates to paid maternity leave for Kelly Rockwell and an unpaid childcare leave of absence to the dates listed. Number 19, to approve the attached list of individuals to position of teacher or instructional assistant for the 2021 Extended School Year Program. Number 20, to approve the appointment of Carrie Ireland to administer advanced placement exams at Somerville High School. Number 21, to accept the retirement of Francine Mesa O'Connor from the position of Learning Disabilities Teacher Consultant at Somerville High School. Number 22, to accept the resignation of Valentina Corleao from the position of Curriculum Supervisor. Number 23, to approve the listed staff members to the position of Band Camp Directors at Somerville High School. Number 24, to approve the appointment of Matthew Kropasky to the position of Marching Band Director at Somerville High School. 25, to approve the appointment of Stephen Loretty to the position of Marching Band Assistant Director at Somerville High School. Number 26, to approve the attached list of staff members to work in the Guidance Office at Somerville High School during the summer months. Number 27, to approve the appointment of Janet Jacobson to the position of costumer for the 2021 Musical Production at Somerville High School. Number 28, to approve the appointment of Nicole Zirkvich to the position of choreographer for the 2021 Musical Production at Somerville High School. Number 29, to approve the listed individuals to conduct summer child study team evaluations, summer case management. Number 30, to approve Robert Balsersky to the position of Assistant Track and Field Coach at Somerville High School. Number 31, to approve a paid medical leave of absence for Karen Cabrera, Custodian, for the dates listed. Number 32, to approve a paid medical leave of absence for Mary Honraff, Guidance Counselor at Somerville High School, for the dates listed. Number 33, to approve the appointment of Jennifer Marsella to the leave replacement position of part-time Guidance Counselor for the dates listed for Mrs. Honraff. Number 34, to rescind the appointment of Regina Rossi from the position of Junior Class Advisor, effective immediately. And then to, number 35, appoint the listed in staff members to the position of Junior Co-Class Advisor, Junior Class Co-Advisors at Somerville High School. Number 36, to approve the appointment of Janet Jacobson to the position of Costumer for the 2021-2022 Musical Production at Somerville High School. Number 37, to approve the appointment of Nicole Zipkovich to the position of Choreographer for the 21-22 Musical Production at Somerville High School. Number 38, to approve the appointment of Tyler Kezer to the position of Technical Coordinator for the 21-22 Musical Production at Somerville High School. 39, to approve the unpaid childcare leave of absence for Nicole Apizado, Teacher of Mathematics at Somerville High School, for the dates listed. Number 40, to approve an extension to the appointment of Robert Balsersky to the leave replacement position of Teacher of Chemistry for Ms. Rockwell, for the dates listed. Number 41, to change the position of Secretary to the Director of Athletics from a 10-month position to a 12-month position. And 42, to approve the transfer of Amy Dolly from the position of Preschool Clerk to the position of Secretary to the Director of Athletics at Somerville High School. Number 43, to approve Michael Canizaro to the position of Skills USA Advisor for this year. Number 44, to approve the appointment of the listed staff members to write curriculum for the Intro to Education and Tomorrow's Teacher Courses at Somerville High School. Number 45, to approve the appointment of the listed individuals to position of substitute. Number 46, to approve the appointment of William Redden to the position of Advisor for the newly created chess club at Somerville High School. And number 47, to approve the appointment of Freddie Shaker to the position of Supervisor for the 2021 Summer Programs.
So move?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Sergeal moved, and Ms. Saden was the second, thank you.
I have a comment.
Discussion, cap.
Unless I'm mistaken, 27 and 28 are the same as 36 and 37?
No, it's the one, the first ones that you said, that's for this year. That's why I was stressing 2021. So it's really a 2021, and the other ones are for approval for next year. We want to make sure we don't miss them for next year.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Tean.
No problem.
Yep, Mr. Jess.
Dr. Tean, item number 17, it's not often that we have such an item on an agenda, so I just want to be sure that the employee that this is affecting has been provided with the numerous occasions to answer any questions you may have posed or to provide the necessary documentation.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jess.
I would like to make a comment on 22, the resignation of Valentina Correio. She has been a fantastic person in our Curriculum Supervision Department, and it's been a pleasure to work with her through the years I've been on the board and on that committee, and I wish her luck in her future endeavors.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I just want to wish best of luck to all those that are on the agenda for retirement, whatever they have plans for their future. Hope they have a great time.
Okay, thank you everybody for your comments. Can we have a motion? Oh, we did that already, correct. Mr. Boyce?
Yes. Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Abstain from 1930 and 42, but yes on the rest.
Okay, Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo. Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Sergeal.
Yes on 17 to 22. I abstain on 23 to 25, and yes on the rest, sir.
Mr. Sergeal, can you please repeat that?
Yes on 17 to 22. Abstain on 23, 24, 25, and yes on the rest.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmick.
I'm going to abstain from items 23, 24, and 25, and yes for all other items.
Okay, and Mrs. Fabrizi.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Tean. You should have a big drink of water after that last, that was really long. So, any old business items? Okay, we have a motion to close old business.
So move?
Mr. Sergeal and Ms. Matthews seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, extensions? Any new business items from the board? Okay, can we have a motion to close new business?
So move.
Mr. Jess, and who was second, Ms. Matthews was second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Extensions? Okay, so moving on now to the hearing of the public regarding agenda items and non-agenda items. So if there are any comments from the public, please approach the mic, and please state your name and your address. And if we have people kind of just line up, so we're maintaining social distance, I guess. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sally Booth, and I'm from Basking Ridge, New Jersey. It is Poetry Month, April is Poetry Month, and actually, today is Put a Poem in Your Pocket Day. So I wanted to just start out my comments with a poem. What if understanding is a light? We glimpse beyond the thorny thicket of difficult conversations. What if polite banter won't get us there? And even civil discourse keeps us here in our old meadow of safety and ignorance. What if it takes a few bruises and scratches to reach that light? What if you and I need to wade together, in together, talking recklessly? Not silently, not shouting, but fierce in listening, saying, how is it for you? Tell me about that. I want to know what I never knew. I need your suffering to erase my denial and my pain to eliminate your path. Ready? Let's begin. I come before you tonight not only as a Somerville teacher, but as a fellow school board member. I previously served on the Bernard's Township School Board and currently serve as the Board President of a Chief Community Charter School in Newark, New Jersey. Like you, I've been trained by the New Jersey School Board Associations and know the magnitude of your role and how hard the job can be. And I thank you for your time and service. I also know, and I think the budget displays, that the most valuable asset you have are your teachers. Last month, the union presented a vote of no confidence in the superintendent to you. Aside from Mr. Jess, the board generally had no questions and offered only praise for the superintendent. This is fair and to be expected. But don't teachers deserve some acknowledgement and compassion? You talked at length about transparency. Yet do you know the exact number of COVID cases currently in your buildings? Have you ever known the exact number? We don't. In Bernard's Township, in Bridgewater, and Brown Book, you can click on a dashboard and see the exact number of cases in each of the school buildings. Why can't we do that here? By explaining the vote away as only being the leadership of the union of the president diminishes respect for all of us. The membership supports our leaders, just as you do yours. Mr. Pontillo is absolutely right. There is nothing more important than respect, responsibility, and trust, and it has to work both ways. Your faculty has experienced stress, anxiety, and I would venture to say trauma this year. Pandemic teacher is not easy, as Mr. Kimmick mentioned earlier on. Instructing students virtually is challenging, compounded with the fact that many of us were assigned brand-new subject areas a week before school started. Despite it all, we came to school every day and taught your children with grace, kindness, and enthusiasm. Unfortunately for Somerville, several teachers resigned due to the administration's refusal to accommodate their COVID and childcare concerns. As a fellow board member, I urge you and encourage you to sit down with your faculty and listen. We just want to be heard and valued. If we have learned nothing during this past year, it is that relationships matter, and good relationships can change the world. I will end with a quote from a recent NPR article called, "We Need to Be Nurtured Too, Many Teachers Say They Are Reaching a Breaking Point." It states, "The mental health and well-being of teachers can have a really important impact on the mental health and well-being of children who they're spending most of their days with. Having teachers feel safe and supported in their school environments is essential to students' learning and being successful." So let's talk.
Thank you, Ms. Booth.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Board of Education. I am Diane Sobey. I am from Lebanon Township, New Jersey, and I am the Membership Chair of the Somerville Education Association. I asked the staff of Somerville Schools to share their I asked the staff of Somerville schools to share their concerns with me. I prepared a short list of three needs that would greatly assist us while performing our jobs. First is the need for water. Our students and staff need access to drinking water. Our hope is that the water bottle filling stations can be reopened. Some students who walk to school are unable to carry both school supplies and multiple water bottles, as suggested in the reopening plan. If water bottle filling stations cannot be reopened, perhaps bottles of water could be provided for the classrooms. Second is the questioning of staff during contact tracing. Some administrators use an offensively aggressive approach to question staff about contact with a COVID-positive person. The administration's question is all too often, "Did you break protocol?" This question is accusatory and interrogatory. This method results in a pressured response from your staff. We need to find a better way to work together to share in this important process during the pandemic. Third is an environment of toxic stress. The administration is encouraged to reconsider its approach to posting positions. While the postings may not indicate a non-renewal, it is unjust and insensitive to those holding these posted positions. This practice promotes distrust in the administration and a high level of anxiety for all teachers as we care for our colleagues. Thank you for your attention to our concerns.
Good evening, Pat Frain, two zero one Scobie Lane Somerset. And I just want to clarify a couple of things that did come up at the last meeting that I was at, and I just want to say that the SEA has never said that we wanted to go fully virtual. We just wanted to have an idea of who was, not even who was sick, because we understand there are hyper-regulations, there are rules. But if we were exposed to something, we wanted to be able to know that maybe we should go out and get tested, that was all. And another thing is, as somebody has brought up earlier, trust is a big issue, you're absolutely right, and you know what? After being maligned, maliciously and unfoundedly accused of God knows what, I just want to say, you know what? Do I trust you? No, unfortunately I don't. But you know what, though? I'm willing to keep the communication open, because I'm a teacher first and a union representative. I am here for the students of this district, and I want everybody to know that I do all I possibly can for the students of this district. And to do that, I think we do have to open up the communication between us, and I'm willing to do that. So please, don't just shut the door on us. And, um, there's only one thing I wanted to add. You know, it really wasn't that important, but please, thank you to those who spoke, and have a great night, everybody, be safe, please.
So I don't have a poem, I don't have a speech, but what I have is the championship trophy that we won in hockey. I'm Doug Leonard from Branchburg, Sons, they play in the hockey team, also on the golf team, one is here tonight. My ask is that you revisit the budget and what you can do to help fund us. I'm also worried that we won't have approval to allow our kids to play next season, and that you allow our kids to play next season. Budget presentation was very well done, you obviously have a very strong understanding of the budget, but I ask you to go back and look at it. If there's money in the reserves that can be used, let us have some of that money to pay for ice times, bus, help fund the kids. We were told that the budget was cut by the state, and that's why money was not available, but yet I heard that there was an increase in the state budget that came to the school system. If that's the case, is there money that can be given to us to help fund the hockey team? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wendy Cudick, I'm actually not from Somerville or anywhere, I'm from Middlesex Borough, I'm here to support the families that my two boys played with this past season.
Can you please just state your address, too?
Sure, eight one seven Hazelwood Ave, Middlesex, New Jersey, oh eight eight four six. Excuse my scrubs, I came straight from work to make the meeting and I missed the beginning comments because I went to the wrong door, but I made it around. I'm just here to support the Somerville families, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to reiterate a bit from the comment I made online, that their participation in this program along with Somerville's support is crucial to the continued success of this tri-op. We've worked very hard to build this program up through the past four years, and it's paid off this year, as you can see by the cup that we have today. I'm praying that you can find some way to contribute to the program, whether it be a set amount per player, as you do for some of the other sports, picking up the transportation costs if we have any, maybe the cost of officials or covering the assistant coach fee that like has been done in the past, any little bit at all would help. After the year we just had, I can't stress how grateful I was that my two players had the opportunity to participate in the tri-op this past season, not only because it was a successful one, but because I saw them thrive for the first time within the past year. Please give your players the support they desperately need to continue in our program. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Aileen Jimenez of Flemington, New Jersey. I'd like to begin by saying that although...
Can you please state your address, please?
Forty-seven Pony Lane in Flemington.
Thank you.
I'd like to begin by saying that although I've been serving as the SEA secretary, I'm speaking for myself this evening. At the last board of ed meeting, Mister Kimick thanked people that shared their thoughts and recognized that public speaking is difficult for some. I appreciated that insightful comment, as I am one of those people. Although I speak in front of fourth graders for a living, I'd rather be home with my son tonight, but here I am, hoping that I can say something that might open you up to listening. A coworker recently asked me about the plaque on the wall at Vanderbeer. I hadn't given it much thought. I said it was there to recognize our recently retired principal after her ten years as principal. "Why?", I was asked, and made me stop and think, why was there a plaque, or why wasn't there a plaque for the previous principal? She had served as principal for twenty-three years. Why are there no plaques for the staff members that have served the Somerville community for ten, twenty, thirty, thirty-five years? At the last board of ed meeting, Pat Frain, serving as SEA president, presented concerns on behalf of the SEA membership. There are two sides to every story, and it seems that you've chosen not to listen to ours. Disheartening things were said. You questioned how many members voted and what the breakdown was. It felt like we were being accused of lying. It was stated that there were rumors of SEA leadership bullying members. Why would we do that? As I said previously, after an eleven-hour day in Somerville today, I'd rather be home in Flemington with my son. Why would we be making up concerns if there weren't any? I was also left wondering how many unhappy SEA members are acceptable. The number that voted in the affirmative was substantial, was worth listening to. In closing, I'd like to read from the SEA Constitution and Bylaws, Article Three, Purpose of the SEA. There are five purposes listed. The number one purpose is to work for the welfare of students, the advancement of education, and the improvement of educational opportunities for all. That is why we took the vote. We care for these students each and every day. We deserve to be treated with respect. That is why we ask you to listen to our concerns. If you won't do it for us, do it for them, do it for the students. Thank you.
Good evening, Dennis Sullivan, eight South Rogers Avenue, I'm gonna wear two hats tonight, first hat is as a retired staff person. I'm sorry to hear, but also glad to hear the retirement of Fran O'Connor. I had the privilege of working with Fran for many years, she was a learning consultant, and classroom teachers need support. And our child study team, going back to when I first started here in nineteen seventy-three, has always been very supportive of the staff. I just want to wish Fran good luck. Her little twins are probably grown now, and she'll have more time to spend with them. I was happy to see that forty-one years after I started the chess club at Vanderbeer School, we're gonna have a chess club at the high school, and I would like to offer my volunteer, lack of expertise in chess, but I will challenge Mister Sardiel to a match of his choosing at a later date. So I'm available, I don't know what the protocol will be to allow me to volunteer in the schools, but I'm at your disposal for a spirited, poorly-played match. So put that on your calendar. Want to switch to my mayor's hat. Tomorrow night, as you mentioned before, NHS inductees will take their pledge. I've shared with Mister Foley and Mister Clark some thoughts from my office, I hope they can be read into the record or put into the program if it's available, it's my pleasure to do that. I wish I could come in person, maybe next year. And finally, next week, May third through seventh, is Teacher Appreciation Week. I will have a letter going to the SEA members from my office, I will also have a press release on the borough website. The old bumper sticker, if you remember, if you can read this, thank a teacher. As a former staff member and a parent of two kids who came through this system, I have nothing but the highest regard for the staff, past, present, and future. Well done, teachers, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Granville Brady from nine Leeway in Somerville. First of all, I think this is a responsible budget. I do represent the Borough of Somerville as Finance Chairman, and I know a little about this, and unfortunately, a great deal of our municipality, the properties in our municipality pay no taxes whatsoever. And this is a handicap for not only the school board, but also for those taxpayers who are stuck with paying it. Your budget is a good budget, the school system is a good school system, and this is reflected in the quality of people who are moving into Somerville because it is such a wonderful place to live. In spite of twenty-five percent or more of our properties that don't pay a single penny, we're still able to pay the budget. This year, we lost ten million dollars in ratable property when the medical center took over the cancer center and deemed it to be part of their building and their nonprofit hospital. We simply can't afford to have too much of that happen and still have quality education. So I congratulate you for putting a budget together that was thoughtful, comprehensive, and will benefit the people of Somerville for many years to come. Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other in-person comments?
Hi, my name is Sharon Gornick, I am a co-grievance chair, and I just wanted to speak to number seventeen and the nine through twelve district-wide resolution on behalf of Heather. We are starting the pre-grievance process, the prerequisite to the grievance meeting tomorrow, in order to retain her position, so I would respectfully disagree that in all the information that I have, that her questions have been answered adequately. And so I felt this time was appropriate to speak to that line agenda item, and wanted to make you aware that that is happening. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, I believe there are two more online comments, I can't see Ms. Bacatie, you're over there, okay, got you.
It was cold over there, so... Sorry, so we have Denise Lang from two oh one Grandview Drive in Branchburg writes, "I support the SEA, I appreciate the hard work and dedication the SEA executive board members and committee members exhibit on a daily basis to support the membership. Thank you for all you do." And the final comment we have is from Helene Gerson, she just put Central New Jersey. "Just a reminder, the SEA supports me, I am the SEA." Those are all the comments we have this evening.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bacatie. Okay, at this time, can we have a motion to close public comment?
So move, sir.
Okay, Mister Sardiel, you have a second? Mister Carlson? Okay. Starting discussion. All right, I just want to make a comment, I want to thank, well, we'll do a roll first, okay? We don't need to do a roll, okay? Sorry, Mister Boyce, I'm collecting my thoughts here. What's that, yeah, just a voice vote. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, extensions? All right, so public comment is closed. I again want to thank everybody that made comments, I'll reiterate, we'll share it again this evening, just about, I do think it takes a great deal of courage to get up at public meetings and to make comments in a way that people do, I want to thank people for doing that, you know, taking the opportunity to express, you know, things that are important, opinions that are important to them. I also want to assure people that the board hears that, you know, the comments that are made, you see us all taking notes, it is something, again, that, you know, we do discuss and reflect on after the meeting is over and going into next meeting, so I do want to assure everybody that that is the case. Regarding, you know, ice hockey, on a personal note, I want to share, I've kind of experienced firsthand the difficulty of having a sport that is not supported in the budget, that my child plays or practices and performs in, and that was part of, you know, my child's life, I understand the difficulty with that, it's a really hard decision on the board, it's actually what got me onto the board, and, you know, when you get on this side, you realize that the number of challenges that are associated with the budget. So I do want to thank the parents that made those comments about ice hockey, it is something, again, that, you know, I can very much empathize with, I'm sure other board members can also empathize with that, and it's something, again, that, you know, that board members have personalized and, you know, understand the challenges associated with that. Regarding, you know, again, the comments made by many staff members here, I want to thank you again for making public comment, for sharing your opinions around those things. I could say around teacher stress, you know, I experienced it firsthand, my wife is a teacher, I work in public schools, many people on the stage are also associated with children every day, working in public schools or working and providing services to students. This year in particular is an incredibly difficult and challenging year, and that's why I start every meeting off, you know, thanking people, and I truly mean that from the bottom of my heart, that I understand the challenges, I understand the difficulties that, you know, people are working their way through this year. This is a year like no other that any of us have experienced in our personal lives, but also in our professional lives, and again, I think that the efforts that are made on a daily basis by individuals are something that I can only assure people that I recognize as a member of the board and other board members recognize as well. So with that, if there are any other board members that have discussions or something that they want to add at this point, this would be the time to do it. Okay. So moving on in the agenda, at this point, we are going to move ourselves into executive session, so resolved at the Board of Education, move to recess into executive session to discuss a grievance and matters falling within attorney-client privilege with respect to the subject. The minutes of this executive session, to the extent permitted by law, will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved, subject to confidentiality requirements. Is there a second?
Second.
Mister Sardiel, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are in executive session at seven forty-seven. Okay, thank you all for attending, at this point. Okay, thank you all for attending at this point.
So, second.
What happened?
Second before the motion was met? Don't even think about it. Second.
I'll in favor.